Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call and order this regular board meeting of the Richland One School District Board of Commissioners. It's Tuesday, February 25th at 7:10 PM. We are located at Columbia High School, 1701 West Chester. Commissioner Devine.
Thank you. Let us bow. Gracious source of wisdom as we gather today to discuss the future of our school community. We ask for your guiding presence. May our deliberations be marked by compassion, open-mindedness, and a deep commitment to the well-being of all students.
We are always excited to have an opportunity to spotlight some of the many outstanding students we have in Richland School District. Tonight, we'll recognize three Drea High School students who recently did something extraordinary. We're honored to have Chief Arby Drake Jenkins of the Columbia, Richland Fire Department here to recognize the students as well. First, we'll ask Drea Principal Dr. Joe Eberlin to come up and introduce his students and tell us about what they did.
Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to introduce a few of our amazing Drea student athletes and briefly tell their story. I'm going to ask our student athletes to come on up, as well as Ms. Wagner, who is a part of this event. A few weeks ago, around 7:45 in the morning, Battalion Chief Lowery of the Columbia Fire Department came to see me at school. As my secretary explained, the fire chief was here. All I could think was, what have we done now? As you know, Drea has more than a few fire trucks. Chief Lowery quickly explained that his visit was for a very good reason. He told me that the evening prior, members of our track and field team had helped save a woman's house from burning down. The students were running through the shandong neighborhood on a long-distance training run and heard a woman calling for help with using a fire extinguisher. These student athletes did not hesitate and simply answered, "We can help." While the members of the team waited outside for the fire trucks to arrive, three students, Micah Roth, Eliza Jones, and Hampton Rogers entered the house with Ms. Donna Wagner, the homeowner, to put out the fire in the search for her dog. When Columbia Fire arrived, they took over, and Mrs. Wagner's house was saved. By the time the fire department was finished, our student athletes had left to finish the run and get back to practice. Chief Lowery had come to Drea so that we can help him identify this humble and heroic group of kids. So tonight, I present Micah, Eliza, Hampton, and our long-distance runners who helped save the house and a dog as well.
Good evening, Miss O'Neal. Thank you for allowing us this moment. You know, in the time of fires, thought, everybody's running away from it. And sometimes you think, firemen, they gotta have a little something wrong upstairs because they running into a burning structure which you run away from. But tonight, we are to honor these three courageous people who thought enough courage to put their life on the line to go in and save a home from someone that was in distress. We really appreciate that you all did. I mean, you know, it takes a lot to do what you did. You could've just stood by and, like so many people do, just watched out for her. But because of what you did, it gave us the opportunity to get there and make sure that it wasn't out, but not on that, but it stopped the fire from spreading. You know, we talked about learning how to use an extinguisher. And of course, everybody knows how to use an extinguisher. You all, some kind of training you got, or whatever you got, learn how to use that extinguisher. And you did a great job, and we're real proud of you. Our firefighters, our staff are proud of you because what you did, you made their work just a little bit easier, you know, about what you did. So tonight, we just want to present something to you from the fire department. You know, just let you know, we appreciate what you all did. Thank you. So we hope you do this.
This year's collaborative food drive efforts resulted in the collection of 3,694 pounds of food between Richland One and the City of Columbia Parks, which were all donated to the Harvest Hope Food Bank. These donations are equivalent to 3,078 meals for people in our community. Say again, thank you to all of our schools and departments that have participated in this year's food drive, and congratulations to all 178 students that submitted essays this year for the Dream Keeper Scholarships. In addition to those 12 scholarships awarded, all of the students that participated also received a gift card for their participation. So thank you so much to the City of Columbia for continuing this initiative, which has provided our students an opportunity to not only receive scholarship funds, but also make a difference in the community through service and giving. So we thank you. It has indeed all been a pleasure on this evening, and until next year, I hope y'all have a good evening.
With that, we will move on to the Office of Teaching and Learning 7.01 Firefighters Program presented by Mr. Deacon.
I will not still my voice. I have too much to claim. If you see me looking at books, or coming at your house, or walking in the sun, know that I look for fire. I have learned from book, dear friend, of men dreaming and living and hungry in a room without light, who could not die since death was too poor, who did not sleep to dream, but dreamed to change the world. And so if you see me looking at your hands, listening when you speak, marching in your ranks, you must know, "I do not sleep to dream, but dream to change the world." Those are the words of Martin Carter, written when he was 16 years old, proclaiming that his young voice is still a voice nonetheless. So we appreciate you, Chairman Lomeneck, and Board of Commissioners, Dr. Witherspoon, for giving us this opportunity to recognize more young voices, and how coincidental that we started this afternoon recognizing students who ran towards fire, because here we are, training students to do exactly that same thing.
I want to thank you. My name's David China. I'm with C.A. Johnson High School, heat hunters, as students have dug the classroom, the program. It's our first year. We've been making strides. I have three students here with me this evening. I have Shaheen Mostokes. I have with me Talique Smith and Anthony Covington Gordon.
My name's Shaheen Mostokes, I'm in 10th grade. The reason I chose this firefighter course is because I like the way it teaches you in the real world, what it can do for you in life, and how you can view it and what it teaches you. Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Witherspoon and his team, Richland One Commission. My name is Talique Smith, and I am a senior at C.A. Johnson High School. The reason I joined the firefighters program is because of the aspects I can think of firefighter, the sense of building camaraderie and a brothership with people you wouldn't have known the day before. Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Witherspoon, Board members. I am Anthony Covington Gordon, and I am a junior at C.A. Johnson High School. The reason I chose this program is because it taught me to value companionship, and also taught me about the many rules that I would have to approach when I escaped high school. Thank you.
My name is Angel O'Neal. They know me as Chief O'Neal. I've been teaching the firefighter program since 2018 at Lower Richland High School. I've had the privilege of serving as a firefighter for 22 years, as a full-time career firefighter and as a volunteer, which I still do today, considered for me. I've had the honor of working side-by-side with many remarkable individuals. Some of them were here tonight, including David China, with whom I've shared some hours on the truck together. Six years ago, when my program first started, we had fewer than 15 students. Since then, we have made tremendous progress. Through hard work and dedication, we've grown the program to the South Carolina Fire Academy maximum of 15 students per class with one instructor. Today, I'm proud to say that we currently have 42 students enrolled in our firefighter certification courses. We even had a waiting list for the program for this year. This growth is a testament to the commitment of our students to pursue careers in public safety, which includes fire, EMS, police, and dispatchers. Over the last six years, the program has served 254 students. In our firefighter program, we teach students not only the basics of fire suppression, but we also teach them essential skills that extend beyond the fire ground. Some of the key areas of instruction include fire science. This is an understanding of fire behavior, how fires start, how they spread, how to control them safely and effectively. They also learn fire prevention and fire safety. Not only do I teach them how to reduce the fire hazards and prevent fires from occurring in the first place, but my students go around to other classes within school, teaching fire extinguisher classes and fire safety.
Good evening, everyone. Before I even start, I want to thank the chairman, the Board of Commissioners, Dr. Witherspoon, and Ms. O'Neal for allowing me to come and speak on this evening. As Ms. O'Neal has said, my name is Jasmine Myers. I am currently a student at the South Carolina Fire Academy, and I am currently employed with Lower Richland Fire Department. I graduated Lower Richland High School in 2021, and truthfully, I took this program because I didn't want to be in concert band anymore. But little did I know that it was going to shift my trajectory completely. It connected me with a mentor who helped me inside of the classroom and even out, still to this day. It helped me change my career path because originally I wanted to be a senior. I knew I was going to be the next Beyonce, honestly. And it also showed me that there are no limits to what I can accomplish in life.
My name is Kevin Erick. I attend Lower Richland High School. I'm a junior. I play football and wrestle. I entered the program at first because I just needed another class to fill my schedule. But after further on, I got into the class, I realized that I had a bigger purpose in life, and it gave me the reason to get out of bed late in the morning. You know, this program helped me realize that I can help save lives and impact my community in ways that's never been impacted before, and I'm just very thankful for Chief O'Neal, Principal Williams, and the whole Lower Richland staff to allow me to be up here and represent myself. Thank you.
My name is Seth White, and I've been with Chief O'Neal for three years. I'm a senior, and what the program really brought to me is that it's a lot more than just putting out a fire. You're helping the community out, you're helping a lot more, it's a bigger purpose in the community than just putting out a fire. And I also have made a lot of new friends during this program, and it's just a real good feeling knowing that you have a big accomplishment, and you know that you're able to help the community more than just sitting there. Yeah.
My name is Jeremiah Goode, and I'm 11th grade. This program's taught me that we can look up and restore the community, be a bigger person, and we also have people that we can lean on when we need times, and we can do things together. It'd be great.
Good evening. My name is Noah Lukey. I'm a 12th grader this year. The firefighter program, this will be my second year in it. And my first year in the program, I never really got it as just being a firefighter. But coming on to my second year, it's really made me just to look out, and it's motivated me to actually want to help out the community, not only my community, but to help out just putting out fires in general, because it's just not good for the world, you know, fire. So it's motivated me to not only help out for my community, but just to help out worldwide, to want to help solve problems with fires.
Good evening. My name is Quentin Boy, and I'm also a senior at Lower Richland High School. I've been with the fire program, Chief O'Neal, for going on three years now. Being part of this program just brought like a sense of familyhood and a brotherhood towards me, because growing up, I'm not gonna lie, I did not like school. So coming into my sophomore year, being able to join the intro class, and just making new friends, and going outside, seeing the different fire equipment, you know, putting on my own PPE, my own SCBA, everything together like that, it just gave me a sense of, like, okay, cool, I'm doing something, and knowing once I graduate, I have a career field that's almost a guaranteed open to me. Like, that means like, my school system really does care about me, same with my principal, my chief, my classmates, and members of the board. It just shows that. Having the CTE program shows kids, like, hey, we have your back if you want to do something in your life. So that's what being part of this program has brought to me as well.
I'm here today to speak about the Early Learning Center. Many have expressed concerns, one side being for the school, the other being against it because of no doubt in its support. I do believe we all care about what happens with the next generation, and this energy can definitely be used to help us make our district better in so many ways. It does not have to be in us versus them all the time. I inquire today about these programs and was told that they are at seven schools, when only two of them being at capacity. This was reiterated in the information that was provided to us at last year's school board meeting at Lower Richland. I am a strong believer in quality public education. I am a product of this district's public education. I also recognize that we must address the immediate needs of K-1, I'm sorry, K through 12 schools, from infrastructure to classroom needs, especially with the potential for several funding cuts and use of public school funds for vouchers. The South Carolina General Assembly appropriated funds through various programs and subsidies. It's important to note that some of this funding is not guaranteed. I believe we should focus on utilizing the spaces we already have. A new facility that cannot sustain itself is not necessary at this time, especially when the data and funds are not available. I'm grateful that we have state representatives who are deeply involved, and my hope is that we and they will continue to advocate to protect public funding for public schools. When the need arises, I truly believe they will fully fight to fund early childhood education buildings and ensure long-term sustainability without relying on solely or receiving uncertain federal funds. The best way to move forward is through a bond vote, or for the General Assembly to fully fund pre-K programs, and to assure a new facility can be sustainable. I understand there will be differing opinions, but ultimately, this decision should be made by the people, either through a bond vote or guaranteed legislative funding. I just want to end with tomorrow. If you all can come out and support the Lower Richland Lady Diamonds at the Diamond Mine at 6:30, they will be playing Disha England at the Diamond Mine in the third round of playoffs. Come out and support.
Good evening, everyone. I just, I don't have a speech, I just need clarity. As I started my car yesterday, there was a man speaking on a talk show, and he was making it political, white versus black. And I just need verification, since it was alleged on that talk show that the board name was sublet. And I'm saddened that we are fighting over craziness. So I just want to know, what occurred with the budget? Why are we trying to build an establishment? And we have needs in the school. I worked in the school district before I was fire, I was a district fire. But what I'm concerned with, I spent a lot of money in the school district, helping with fundraising out of my own personal money. I'm retired, I'll be 78 this year. But why are we spending money where we should not be spending it? If this place is vacant, is it costing the school board anything for lunch? We need to know that. And additionally, why is it that we do not follow protocol, policy, and procedures? Because this is not training enough our young people how to behave in public. Am I making sense to you, because y'all looking at me like a deal in headlights? I care about the school system. I think our kids should be helped with the money that we are allocated, that you are allocated, because I'm a taxpayer, state, federal, district. But I want to see that money put to good use, rather than showing up desk just in case somebody come in to do bodily harm, or if you have kids that are going out the wrong door. Why is it that instead of putting a security message, you move it along from one door to another? We need to be proactive. We need to encourage the kids on our experience. No one should ever say that you should not share your experience, because that's how you learn. These young people, I'm so proud of them, because they're not in the streets doing craziness. We need to bring back, what's a good adjective? We need to bring back discipline. The kids aren't afraid of anyone. Their parents aren't afraid of anyone. I worked in the school system for eight years, was called everything but a child of God. But you can't say anything to them because there's no backup.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Carter.
Good evening, Chairman Lomeneck, Board of Commissioners, Dr. Witherspoon, Executive Staff, and my fellow stakeholders. I come this evening in a spirit of celebration, celebrating because we appear to be at the point where the Early Learning Center can finally move forward. I celebrate the fact that this board now has an opportunity to demonstrate what it has shared with us over and over again, its commitment to put children first, children before politics, children before special interests, children before enemies that come to us and tell us what we don't need, and try to convince us to have others believe that we do not need it when we know what our children need based on research that you've done and dollars that you have identified. I come to celebrate the fact that by coming together, we can make sure that, as we know God answers prayer, and Commissioner Devine asks God to grant wisdom to this board to make decisions that are in the best interest of all children. I celebrate that that includes the children of the district of Lower Richland, who should not be separated and set apart for years. I celebrate the fact that a member of this very board tonight spoke of the importance of not allowing something to sit and not be used, but to be used. Please let us not squander over a million dollars and allow anyone to benefit when we know what our children need. Thank you, and I celebrate the fact that a vote comes tonight, but progress comes in the morning. Thank you.
I acknowledge that serving education early is crucial for our children's future. However, I urge you to reconsider building the ELC at the expense of existing 53,000 students. The funds allocated for this project do not cover the operational costs of the ELC, and our current schools are in dire need of upkeep and renovations. The district is struggling with issues such as rodents and structural decay. We have current challenges such as hiring and retention. With 80 certified openings, including 36 elementary positions, how will the district address the staffing crisis? Legal and permitting concerns. Have the supporters of the ELC considered the legal ramifications and permitting issues, along with the impact on surrounding properties? Ignoring warnings from the S.C. Department of Education could also have serious consequences. They would take over the finances of the district. Financial implications. Taxpayer impact. Have you considered the additional cost to taxpayers, potentially adding a minimum of $100 to tax bills? Funding concerns. Public school education is not fully funded by the state, and the plans to divert lottery funding from public to private schools exacerbate this issue. Will our synergists and representatives stand up for public education and provide the necessary funding? So in conclusion, yes, we need additional resources in the district, but we must consider all circumstances and heed the warnings in the report. Building the ELC without addressing these pressing issues is not the solution. Let's prioritize the needs of our current schools and ensure we are making informed decisions that benefits all students. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Lee Carroll.
My concern is, I've lived all over the world, and I have stood up for all kids, and by the years, I've talked to a young man in reference to finding our T.C. uniform to Oakley, and the young man said, "I'll get back with you. I'll get back with you." And to this very day, the young man had not got back with him our uniform. And we went and saved our kid, went and invested $1,000 to make sure our uniforms clean for those kids, because being edge military, if your uniform not starts to look good, you don't feel good. And they got money in the budget for those kids, but for some reason, the young man said that, "I'll get back with you. I'll get back with you." And I don't want to get your money back. I don't want that money back. I want those kids to have clean uniforms and look good. And I hope and pray that y'all do not go forward this Early Learning Center down in Lower Richland, because somebody will pay the money to change it. And if you look very closely, somebody did that to make money and used the school to make that money. But at common law enforcement, I know a group, I see one, but thank y'all very much.
I'm Dr. Witherspoon. I'm Holly M. Simon Scott from Eastover, South Carolina. I graduated from Weber High School, May 30th, 1952. The whole family was urged by, my parents, Christabel and Constance Simon, now deceased, and get a good education. Education is power, and we need the Early Learning Center, so they can start out early, get them started early. And who knows? It may be a potential physician, scientist, that can cure cancer, Alzheimer's, Parkinson disease, and a lot of other diseases. You know, Craig Melvin, there's all NBC News, he graduated from St. John Baptist Preschool, and he was taught by my sister, Grace Haas, knowledge is power, so we need the Early Learning Center to get them started early.
And Dr. Witherspoon, I'm Renice G. Scott. I'm 80 years of age. I lived in Lower Richland area all my life, and I'm still working there. The people who came up and talked about what they want or don't want, I've never seen them work in the community. The Lower Richland area is here to represent, we told everybody out there in Lower Richland, I told them not everybody don't need to speak, because all of us are one accord. I've been on Richland County Council for 20 years. I've worked in system 10 years and 30 years. I've worked with school bonds to make sure that the school got what they needed. County Council has always supported District One and District Two when I was on school, when I was on County Council, because a lot of people say District One don't need that, or District Two don't need that, but all our kids need that. All our kids need education. I was a single parent when my daughter was six and my son was four. If I didn't have the help of my mother and my brothers and sisters, my father had died. I could not have worked in Columbia and stayed there. The Early Learning Center is a must for the future of our kids. They are building 300,000 by 1,000 homes, 200 right down here on Lower Richland, right next to the school, another 300 not too far from the school. We need that center. I have been an advocate for the Lower Richland area in Richland County all my life, and I will continue to work. And I want you to know that I am still working in the community. We are doing housing, we are doing senior citizen, and I'm a senior citizen now, too. 34 years we've done this. And everyone who got in here and talked about what they don't need, I have never seen them hand someone a glass of water. We are talking about our young kids. And Dr. Lomeneck, I appreciate all of y'all on the board for doing something. When you work your budget, though, make sure that there's enough money in there, and I will help you campaign with Richland County Council, make sure that y'all get the money. It's about our kids, y'all. It's not nothing else. Our time is moving on, and God told us, when you do it to at least one of us, you also done it to me. If we can get our kids stirred up and started and get a good education, look what they can do for this world. Please, continue to do that Early Learning Center. We definitely need it. I'm talking about an advocate who works. We work in our community. And I thank y'all so much for listening to us. And please, anything I can do. They, I told them to sit down. Y'all should have given me four minutes. Because I didn't want all of them to come up and talk.
Thank you, Ms. Carter.
I appreciate y'all.
So to the Board of Commissioners, to Dr. Witherspoon. As a freshman legislator, I sat and listened to the Governor give his State of the State address. And as he talked about his budget priorities, he mentioned full-day 4K programming. The Governor said that 18,083 students were currently enrolled in the program, and that the Office of First Step to School Readiness anticipated a 7% increase in the number of children from low-income households who would enroll in the program in the 25, 26 school year. He asked us to fund $2.8 million for early childhood education. And as the Governor sat there and asked us for that increase, I thought about my own community. And I thought about what was happening in Lower Richland. Kaufman Road, where I went to middle school. Har Hill Elementary have the highest enrollment amongst elementary schools in the district. And between the two, approximately 200 of their students are 3K to 4K. They're bursting at the seams. And we know what's happening with residential growth in the Lower Richland community. Lower Richland is experiencing unprecedented growth. And these schools are experiencing daily new enrollment of students. If not the Vince Ford Center, what is the plan? What is the plan to provide the residents of Lower Richland early childhood education opportunities? I know that Charleston is building these centers. They have about three now. There's the State of the Art Center in Spartanburg. What's happening with District One? Where are these opportunities? I'm lending my support to help make sure that the area that you deemed the most in need and with the least capacity has early childhood education. Lower Richland was the area that you said had the greatest need. So what is the plan if not the Vince Ford Early Childhood Education Center? I'm going to ask, and I'm going to be here to assist. But I want to know, what's the opportunities for the educational opportunities for those younger students? And we know early childhood education is the key.
As a childcare director, it was fascinating to hear the young students that talked about wanting to be a firefighter. And in most cases, if not all of them, probably attended a preschool program. And in a preschool program, we have what's called playtime and dress-up time and housekeeping time. And you get to imagine what you would be when you're going to grow up. And so I only can believe that it was because of our early childhood center that those children had the wherewithal to then pursue the opportunities to be a firefighter beyond their K-12 years. So good evening Chairman Lomack, Superintendent Witherspoon, and Commissioners. I am Dr. Jennifer McConnell, and I am an early childhood program director in the area. Tonight, I stand before you as an advocate for the early care and education community. I have been following the news about the original one Early Learning Center and was related with the potential of a childcare center that would be built to support the children of the area. You may have heard or been informed that there is a crisis in childcare. I know it firsthand. If you need any data, more information, you can contact Dr. Jennifer Melissa McConnell, and I can help you with that. But the shortage pertains to a shortage of access due to the lack of available slots. There's a lack of quality childcare preschool programs, the weekly expense, and then too few quality programs. And to top it off, is the struggle of recruitment and retention of childcare teachers. I understand that there has been challenges along the way, but it is my hope that you all will continue the efforts to bring this center to fruition. We need more high-quality preschool programs like the Richland One Early Learning Center. Making school choice is important for K-12, but it's equally as important for a family choosing a center that will help build the foundation for their child's development. At the heart of, at the heart of children, representing the heart, at the heart of children, we bring a wealth of knowledge and expertise that can bring about change, renew opportunities to prepare our children to be lifelong learners, to make a positive impact in their families, schools, and communities. Embrace the challenges, remove the barriers, but move forward with the project for our children. Thank you for your time and the opportunity for my voice to be heard.
Since the last time I was here before you, we got a pretty contentious election process this past November, didn't we? But the community spoke, and change was made. The vocal voices got what they wanted. And now it is time to give the children and families of the Garnishville Row, Hopkins, and maybe even Eastover what they need. I remember when Drea wanted field. The community was relentless until the field was completed. Keenan was built. Voices were relentless until that field was built. I work with parents and children in every corner of District One as a coach and a navigator. And so I've seen what early childhood can do and what the lack of it has resulted in. I'm proponent of equity. Not giving everyone else what everyone else gets, but giving what the people need. The voters got what they wanted. Now on November the 5th. Now, school board, let's give our children in the Lower Richland area what they need. Let this be the first of the three early childhood learning centers that will flood the school district of Richland One. Now, as I leave you, I want to ask a question. If this building is not built, and I might make the attorney to answer this question. If this building is not built and it is sold, what is the law that says who gets first dibs at this building? Now, I have been told that it is possibly a charter school or a private school. We're public school proponents. And we're going to let a charter school where they already take our voucher money to go to the public school, to go to the charter schools? We're going to let them buy our building? That's there? I say, no, we're not. We are better than that. We are better than that. Thank you all for listening. And if I do anything to help, just let me know. I retired from District One, but I work here every day. Thank you.
Commissioner Bishop.
If this goes for, as a prevailing vote in favor of this recommendation, how many teacher vacancies will be added?
Yes, sir. At this time, we would have 38 teacher vacancies at this time.
Thank you.
We'll now move on to the Office of the Superintendent, 11.01 Superintendent's Report presented by Dr. Witherspoon.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Since our last meeting, we learned that six of our students, four from Drea and two from AC Flor, have been named finalists in the 2025 National American Scholarship Program, which recognizes academic and talented high school seniors across the country. The 15,000 finalists will compete for scholarships collectively worth nearly $26 million. The scholarship winners will be announced in the spring. Congratulations to our National American Scholarship finalists. Their names are posted on our website, richlandone.org. Eleven of our girls and boys varsity basketball teams made the state playoffs this year, and four of our teams are still in contention for state championship titles. The Eau Claire Girls Team hosted Mid-Carolina tonight. And I understand they won. And the Lower Richland Girls Team will host Bishop England tomorrow, Wednesday, February 26th. I won't say that, he is at Lower Richland High School. The C A Johnson Boys Team will play Abbeville in the upper state championship on Thursday, the 27th, at the Florence Civic Center. And the W J Keenan Boys Team will play Loris High School in the lower state championship on Friday, the 28th, also at the Florence Civic Center. Congratulations and good luck to all of our teams. Go team. Last Thursday, February 20th, we held our annual masterclass in partnership with the Yontecare Foundation. Thanks again to Karen Alexander-Banks and her team for bringing PJ Morton to Richland One to share his talent, insights, and experiences with our students and students from surrounding districts. We also want to extend kudos and congratulations to the students from W J Keenan High School and Columbia High School who performed before and during the masterclass. Thank you as well to Mr. Kerry Abel, Mr. Walter Graham, and all of our visual and performing arts teachers, principals, student transportation staff, security staff, and all others who helped to make this event a success. Also, we want to congratulate two of our staff members who, for their recent honors and awards. Ms. Lanier Levy Alston, a family and consumer science teacher in middle school, has been named the 2025 South Carolina Association of Family and Consumer Sciences Teacher of the Year. This award recognizes a K-12 family and consumer sciences teacher who has helped improve the quality of family life, identified exemplary educational programs and activities that motivated other educations, built community awareness of family and consumer sciences education. Ms. Alston was recognized on February 19th during the State Associations Conference in Greve. Dr. Candace Coffin, our Executive Director of Information Technology, was selected for induction into the 2025 Consortium for School Networking's COSA Volunteer Hall of Fame. The nonprofit organization is the premier professional association for school system technology leaders. The Volunteer Hall of Fame recognition is awarded to individuals who are committed to advancing COSA's mission. Dr. Coffin will be inducted in April during COSA's annual conference in Seattle, Washington. Our first-ever R1 male conference will be held Saturday, March 17th, from 8:00 a.m. to noon at Olympia Learning Center. The theme is Scoring Success Through Collaboration. Our District Teacher of the Year, Mr. Joseph Bell from Pine Grove Elementary School is the lead coordinator of the conference. The goal of the conference is to create a platform for male teachers from various backgrounds to teach, mentor, and recruit each other. Topics covered during the conference will include time management, leadership, self-care, support for aspiring and new educators, and having a work-life balance. While the conference' primary target audience is male educators, it is open to anyone who would like to attend. The deadline to register is March 7th. The registration link is on our website at richlandone.org. We're looking for more talented, certified, and classified staff to join Richland One, the Richland One team. Our Spring Career Fair will be held on Saturday, March 29th, from 10:00 a.m. to noon at W J Keenan High School. Interested persons are asked to complete an application for a position at Richland One prior to attending the career fair. Certified participants should possess or be eligible for a South Carolina teaching certificate. For more information about the career fair and to complete an application and register for the event, go to www.richlandone.org/careers. There are several education-related observances during the year. This week, February 23rd through March 1st, is Montessori Education Week. Montessori Education Week promotes awareness and appreciation of this educational opportunity and the contributions to piece the development of the child and benefits of a Montessori education. Richland One began implementation of Montessori education in 2000 at Brockman Elementary School, which was the first public Montessori school in the state at that time. Since then, we have expanded our Montessori programs to include programs at Logan and Kaufman Road Elementary Schools and W G G Sanders Middle School.
Mr. Chair, this concludes my remarks. We will move on to 12.02 Legal Advice, Early Learning Center, presented by Chairman Lomack. I would just note, to be very specific, the legal advice focused on the current contract and procurement for the Early Learning Center, not the program generally, but for the current contract that we have. Are there any discussion items or motions by, by the board members? Commissioner Bishop.
I want you to, if you don't mind expounding upon that what you just said again, so that everyone is clear. You did simply say what you said, but just make sure that you can expound upon that a little more. Not going to have a discussion. Do you want to repeat what you said one more time?
Sure, and I'm, and I'm happy to discuss it if I'm missing something. But simply that the legal advice is focused on the current contract and procurement for the Early Learning Center, not the program in general, but for the current contract and procurement for the Early Learning Center.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Moore.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to recommend or make a motion that we terminate the current contract regarding the construction of the Early Learning Center.
All right, there's a motion to terminate the current contract for the construction of the Early Learning Center. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Hershey has seconded the motion to terminate the contract, the current contract for the Early Learning Center. Discussion, Commissioner Moore.
I know it's been said several times already and made clear, and I appreciate that, but I do want to say one more time that this particular motion is not a comment on the need for or the location of the Early Learning Center. It is dealing with the current contract. This project has, for whatever reason, been mired in controversy. Some may be of our making, some from other sources outside the district. But this motion is designed, and my intent is to seek to that we have the opportunity to move forward from here as a district.
Commissioner Clyburn.
I actually have an alternative motion that I would like to put forward.
All right, Commissioner Clyburn.
The alternative motion that I would like to put forward is to postpone this and this as for consideration. Just due to the fact that it's, this is a permanent decision that we're making tonight. And I think that postponement would allow data to be retrieved. Even though, I think in 2016, First Steps did a study. And based on their recommendation, the need for...
Commissioner Clyburn, I'm sorry to interrupt. Let, if you could, make your motion, and then we need to get a second.
Oh, then we can discuss, thank you.
So we can discuss it. If you could restate your...
Well, I would like to, I would like to make a motion that postpone this, this item for later date to gather more information.
Well, let me, and let me clarify. There are two options for a motion to postpone. One is just a motion to postpone, which means that it would automatically come up at the next board meeting. The second is a motion to postpone indefinitely. Which, what motion are you making?
Just to come up for, at the next board meeting.
So, so Commissioner Clyburn has made a motion to postpone. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Devine has seconded that motion. Now, I'd like to come back to you, Commissioner Clyburn, so that you can finish your remarks regarding the motion.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Chair. In 2016, First Steps, the first...
In 2016, First Steps, the First Steps Program of South Carolina, performed a study. And they determined an extreme need that an early learning center would be supported. Fifty percent of our children that need this service were not being served. And that number has not gotten better. But also, I think this would give commissioners just all of the information that we need in order to make an informed decision. And also, this would give us an opportunity to explore additional support, you know, for permitting and everything else that we may need to go along with this project. So that is my reason. And I don't think it really, I don't think it would hurt or harm the district to do this.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Commissioner Bishop and then Commissioner Hershey.
Thank you, Chair. I do support what Commissioner Clyburn is sharing, although I would have liked to extend it until we had this forensic audit that was ordered. Because it seems like these things have been coupled together. Yes, what you said has been marred or blurred to use something to stop another one. And, you know, when I look at what is the narrative that's being put forth tonight, that's not why these people showed up. These people showed up because they believe it was the program and the project being voted on. All in the same, and that's what has always been the narrative. And so when we come tonight to try to differentiate between the two, it's a little puzzling. And so supporting, taking this is good because it seems like in the eleventh hour, it's starting to go separate ways. It has always been, in a sense, that it was not just with tonight being a canceling or termination of a contract, but it's also been a termination, considered, considered termination of the early learning opportunity for students. They didn't come tonight just to voice their opinion about stopping the procurement opportunity or stopping the opportunity for this building not to be built. They came tonight to say this is what they need. This is what the children need. All they said, this is not what they need. So I'm in support of suspending this because I think we've rehearsed it over and over again that there was a need, that the data was there, that we did prove that this opportunity was going to be beneficial for the Lower Richmond area and the Broad River Corridor and some other areas. It was not just a knee-jerk reaction. It was a need-based decision that was in alignment with our strategic plan, that was allocated with dollars. And when you even look at what came back as the Inspector General's report, it was all mixed in together. It wasn't about necessarily just what I believe to be just a procurement issue. It was all about the capacity, the children. It was an overall study. And so if we look at suspending this to the next meeting, I just wish we would have suspended this conversation until what this board voted on with the five-two vote to have a forensic audit. So if we're going to make the right decision, let's have all the data. Let's have all the information. Let's make sure that we're doing right by this district. We're doing right by this community. We're doing right by these children. And as far as the other needs that are in the district, why we can't do both? We can do both. We can buy desks. We can buy uniforms. We can fix rodents. We can fix everything. We can do teacher pay raises. We can do it all. We can do it, and we got support to do it. I'm so glad that one of our generals of our community said, she's standing there with us, showing the shoulder to make it happen. So when we say what we can't do, I argue that we can do it, and we should do it, and we should do all of it. So my last point is this. With all the growth that's going on in the Lower Richmond community, this just makes sense to me. Because when we look at the demographic study that was given to us to map out this opportunity, it was about seeing tomorrow, not seeing today. It was about seeing something with vision. And I read a good book one time, maybe you read it. It said, "Our people perish for a lack of vision." If you can't see the growth today, you definitely won't see it tomorrow. And by the time you get there, it'll be too late. It also says in that same book that our people will lack for a lack of knowledge. They would perish for a lack of knowledge. We gave data, we gave information at the information point. So if you got the data, you got the information, you see the vision, and it's lined up with the strategic plan, why not do it? So I want to give to that discussion because it seems as if we're splitting the narrative now to be, the program will only be delayed, but the project building is now being denied. Delayed, denied. It was always the same thing. It was all waves together. So I think we need to delay it because this last hour seems to be divided when it always has been together. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bishop. Commissioner Hershey.
Chair, I'd like to amend my motion.
All right.
Okay. Yes, I would like to, in light of some previous statements, I would like to amend my motion to postpone this item indefinitely.
All right, so the motion is now, has been amended to postpone this vote indefinitely. Is there a second to postpone it indefinitely?
Second.
Commissioner Devine has seconded the motion of Commissioner Clyburn to postpone this vote indefinitely. Commissioner Hershey.
You know, I certainly believe in doing what's best for children as an educator myself and living in the Lower Richmond community. This is not something that we take lightly. We need and we ask for. And if there is the data to support building it, let it be seen. That's all I ask for, the data, just to show where we've done the stuff in the district. We've looked at all the schools to support that early childhood, additional early childhood center is needed. There are many programs in the district, and I want you all to think about those persons who did not speak. You didn't see any employees coming up here speaking. You didn't see any current parents of students speaking. Because those in the inside, they know, we know, and I know that there are a lot of programs in Richland One that need to be firmed up. There's funding that we need to get some of our programs to stay to the art so that we can have those collaborations with Willis Technical College as well as USC. If you tour Hayward Career Center, many of those programs do not have what they need for 2025 to be teaching kids. And I know this firsthand. I have a child there. Teaching them welding, but the welding equipment is out of date. Or the cosmetology lab at Lower Richmond does not meet the sufficient size for students in there to serve the clients the way that they need to serve. Richland One is a premier district, but we need to give our schools, our students premier services and a premier environment to work in. It's not that we're against early learning. I'm not against early learning. I'm all for, let's make it what we have, quality the way that it should be and the way that we stand up here and say that we have. Let's bring those persons who are in the schools every day. Talk to them. Ask them what they need. Principals should not have to wait because a freezer has gone out at a school. They don't have space to store the food, but yet we're going to build a $30 million building, but we can't buy a $2,000 freezer. Or the kids cannot use a functioning fire truck, which is a part of the training, which I think should be a basic skill. That fire truck has been sitting there for over five years or whatever was donated, has yet to be repaired, has yet to be painted. So all I'm asking is, let's redirect some of those funds to get what we need in the schools right now to help our students. We have lower classrooms now, and I know this firsthand. I didn't ask for a power school report, but every early childhood classroom is not bursting at the seams. They're not. There are ways that we can be creative to combine schools, to add a wing onto a school. There are things that can be done outside of just building a center or a daycare center where we don't have people to even staff the buildings that we have now. This building was not intended just for Lower Richmond. A lot of people are saying it was for Lower Richmond. It's not just for Lower Richmond. It was supposed to be a district-wide building, so it's not just for the Lower Richmond community. So let's stop saying that we're doing something against the Lower Richmond community. I live in the community. I'm not going to allow people to say we're not doing what's best for the community. People that are speaking of, don't have children in the district, don't have grandchildren in the district. They're speaking based on what they hear and not what they really know. And so I yield the rest of my comments on Commissioner Lomack. And the rest of the board members, I respect everything that you're saying. I hear what you're saying. I understand what you're saying. But let's look at this firsthand. Let's look at what the employees and the parents, current parents, feel that the district needs.
Thank you, Commissioner Hershey. Commissioner Moore.
I was concerned that we had, that we considered an amendment that would delay this till the next board meeting. And now I'm even more concerned that we're talking about delaying a decision on this indefinitely. We have been discussing this for quite some time. This is not just this board, but the board before this one. It's been an issue that's been hanging over our heads, and every day that it's there, it's costing the district money. And to postpone this indefinitely is no guarantee that it'll be solved. We're kicking the can down the road instead of dealing with it now, and that's my concern. I think that in order for us to do the things that we need to do in this district, we need to move past this particular issue. But if we just continue to look at it and continue to have to consider it every time, there are other things that will have to take the back burner and have to not be done. I agree with my colleagues that this district can do all of these things. My concern is that we haven't, and I don't understand. I mean, we talk about how we can get all this done, but a lot of these things are still sitting there, and there's some of the same discussions we've had ever since this project started. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Moore. Any other questions or comments? All right.
One thing, I think we need to, I think it's public information if anybody wants to do research. We're spending over $50,000, $60,000, $70,000 a month right now because we're at a stop. And so we need to think about, do we indefinitely, do we continue spending that amount of money, taxpayer dollars, every month indefinitely? So I'm not sure where we stand on the motion or how it needs to be reworded, or... I see Commissioner Bishop has another comment. Maybe that's going to help us.
Commissioner Bishop.
I'm not necessarily going to help you on that, but I will tell you this. When it's a political football, it's going to cost, it's going to cost the taxpayers. Now, if we want to just call it what it is, one person said tonight, the voters got what they wanted. I give the people what they needed, what they've been asking for. And they didn't need a political football kick down the road any further. But I heard people say, "Still fight." I heard people tonight say, "They still want it." Now, I'm believing that there still can be an opportunity to get this done and do everything else we just mentioned. We have to make sure as board members that we voice our support to get the ice maker finished, to get the tile done on the floor, to get the new roof at the building, but still make sure that we fight and advocate for these students who need early learning. And so as I see an opportunity that we're not finished fighting it, we still need to make sure that we met with every department or agency of organization until every last door has been closed. But if there's a door still open, we need to walk through it. There's a window we can look through to see what this opportunity looks like. We need to look through it. And so, and making sure that we not necessarily keep delaying the process, but we be deliberate about the process, that we literally say, "Hey, taxpayers, we did everything we could." And so by coming tonight at this 11th hour, where it seems that it's now partying ways, but we're just saying what we're doing is denying this, but they'll delay this. I think that deserves more data, more information than tonight. So hopefully, a vote will allow us to come back again, look at all the information that's been requested. Because yes, this previous board, we did that for years. We argued it in public. We were very transparent with information. It was never enough. Now that we have a new board that the State Department said they are willing to finally talk to, because they wouldn't talk to the last board, which is why it cost the taxpayers that amount of money every month because it could have been resolved earlier, but there was only correspondence. There was no conversation. Now we're having conversation. Maybe it can be of some benefit to see if every door has been closed or at least one door open. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bishop. All right, we've got a, we've got a motion by Commissioner Clyburn to postpone this vote indefinitely, seconded by Commissioner Devine. I will now call for the vote.
I think we cannot allow, and I don't want to use this word lightly, exceptionalism to really deter us from what is probably the norm. Because you're right, all of the things that we saw this afternoon at this board meeting really shows the potential of what the school district has. But we cannot allow that to dissuade us from what is the norm. And we've got a lot of children that are just not operating up to par. They're not at standard. And we all know that to get a young person to standard or at least give them the best opportunities that we can, we've got to be able to allow them to have early childhood educational opportunities. I was really astounded to find out that students who are from the lowest socioeconomic backgrounds can come to kindergarten with a $30 million word deficit. Now, I thought $30 million, that's a lot, but they haven't heard, they have a $30 million word deficit in hearing because they haven't had the kind of conversational discussions with parents. They don't have the breadth of topic matters that they discuss, and they come to kindergarten already behind. If we know that this is the case, we've got to have them starting out early if we want that exceptionalism, as I describe it, to really be the norm. And so we've got to do this. We don't have the opportunity to sit back and say, "We want to do programs at Hayward" when students are already high school students. We got to start early, and the board member said something very enlightening tonight. We can do both. If we can do both, why are we choosing not to do one? The one that's foundational. So early childhood education is critical. And I ran on this as a legislator or as a candidate for the House of Representatives, and I'm going to stand on this. Here's the thing, I'm not going to even debate, rather tit-for-tat. I'm looking at what the governor says, and I'm looking at what First Step says. And they both said that there is a growing demand and a growing need for early childhood education, and there is a limited capacity. If there is growing demand, if there is an exceptional need and there is limited capacity, the one thing that we can do is expand capacity. All of the other things, I think, is a red herring. If you start talking about a fire truck, if you start talking about a freezer, we can do both. We can walk at you bubble gum at the same time. But what we know we need to do is grow capacity at the early childhood education level. And I'm just trying to figure out why that end of the spectrum is not being considered. Why is Hayward, a fire engine, and a freezer got greater consideration than early childhood education? And I'm not saying that those things aren't important, but I'm saying where is the importance being placed on early childhood education? But I would like them to help me to understand how a district that has 36 years of clean audits now needs a forensic audit. And help me understand the rationale that we as state legislators are going to allow the State Department of Education to spend. the State Department of Education to spend money investigating or asking for a forensic audit of a district that has 36 years of a clean audit. Here's what I say, for the taxpayers of South Carolina, if the State Department of Education calls for a forensic audit of a district that has 36 years of clean audits, then the State Department should use the resources that we allocated to them, not ask for the school district to pay for it, the money needs to come out of the State Department of Education's budget, so that if you're going to make these frivolous decisions, as I might think that they are, but if they turn out to be frivolous, then the State Department of Education needs to have its funds exhausted for doing so. I think that would create an opportunity for the Superintendent of Education to then think about which school districts they're then going to investigate, and what rises to the top, a really credible rationale or reasoning for going after a forensic audit, because you shouldn't be able to just do that just for willy-nilly purposes. You should have to have some real strong foundational reason for calling for a forensic audit, and it just seems to me that 36 years of a clean audit by a school district doesn't rise to the level of really seeking a forensic audit. And so I would ask my Democratic colleague, what made you think that 36 years of clean audits precipitated the need for a forensic audit? I'd love for them to explain that, because I don't know. I think that we've just got some strong voices in our community. But also, let me just say this, it reminds me of something John Lewis said. He said, "If you see something, you got to say something." And at this point, in what we're dealing with, in not only national news, but what we're dealing with statewide news, and what we're doing locally, nobody has the opportunity now to sit back and not say anything. You cannot be solely beholden to your own personal interest, you've got to put your personal interests aside, you've got to stand up, you've got to speak up, you've got to say something, you've got to have your voice heard, because if it's not going to be heard at the national level, and we know that it's not, and I'll tell you something, it's not going to be heard at the state level with a supermajority at the state level. The only place that you have to voice your true concerns is at the very local iterations of political discourse, and there's no more local political discourse than school board. So everybody has to just reach into their heart to figure out, if you think early childhood education is important, you don't have the right to sit back anymore. And I want to say this one last thing, I was blessed that my daughters had an opportunity that their grandmother cared for them, but when my oldest daughter got to be three, I realized she had to go in an early childhood education center. We lived in Lower Richland. I had to drive from Lower Richland to Broad River Road to a Montessori school to take my daughter every single day, because there wasn't a quality facility in Lower Richland. Now here we have an opportunity for a quality facility that is very close by. My mother could have gone to pick my daughter up from Kaufman Road, my sister could have gone and picked them up, we could have done what families do, supported each other, if we had an early childhood education center in our own community. Look at what we're saying, we want people from the Lower Richland community that has the most distance to drive, to then find a facility that's a comparable facility elsewhere. We're bursting at the seams, I heard Commissioner Hershey say that we're not, but we're bursting at the seams in Lower Richland. Now maybe there's some other opportunities, and I welcome a dialogue to figure that out, but right now, if we're not building 300 spaces at the Vince Ford Early Childhood Education Center, where are we getting an additional 300 spaces? It's a simple question. I asked the board, and I'm here to support and help in whatever ways we can. If the governor has deemed early childhood education as a priority of his, then that means the State Department is seeing it as a priority. Why is it that Richland District One is not seeing it as a priority in the area that has the greatest need, Lower Richland?